Okay, welcome. It's five o'clock. It's April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order, and we will introduce members and staff. So I'm Rick Noonan in the chair, Jane Ramsen, our vice chair, Beverly Bookin, Sean Henry, Doug Cook, David Rosen, and the new guy, Steve Yost. We also have this evening Eric Kinderly, our senior planner. Greg Katamatory is off camera, but in the meeting, our planning director, and we have the big guy, Alex Copelman, our community development director in attendance. Under public hearings this evening, a couple of continuances, but we'll get through them in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, and the Rules of Regulations governing subdivision of land in Gloucester, the Gloucester Planning Board should consider a two-lot definitive subdivision plan by Twenty Main Street or Twenty Main LLC entitled Chisholm Court Extension at Twenty Main Street, assesses map two seven, I'm sorry, map seven lot ninety-four. So this has been requested by the applicant to continue to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is May first, two thousand and twenty-five. Just need a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
I move that we continue the public hearing for the two-lot definitive subdivision at filed by Twenty Main LLC at Twenty Main Street to May first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So we have a motion by Jane Ramsen, second by Doug Cook. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Yost?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, under public hearings this evening in accordance with Mass General Law forty A, Section five, in the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section one point one-one, the planning board shall consider the following proposed zoning amendment. amend the zoning, the Gloucester zoning ordinance by adding a new Section five point two-one demolition delay with the purpose of preserving historical significant structures by determining their historical significance of determining the historical significant of the structure of structures, and if the structures are preferably preserved by the historical commission and delaying demolition as a part of the demolition permitting process of the building commissioner. So that has been asked to be continued to the May first meeting of two thousand and twenty-fives, and I just need a motion and a second.
Yeah, do we get to discuss why it's being continued or ask why?
Sure. So you recall from the last time this was discussed, it was about the appropriateness of whether it should be a zoning ordinance or code of ordinance, and the intention was to withdraw it and re-initiate it. That did not happen at the last city council meeting. I believe it will probably occur on the meeting of the twenty-second, so there'll probably be no action to be taken. But until that's formally withdrawn, we'll just move it out one more meeting.
Okay. I move that we continue the public hearing about amending the Gloucester zoning ordinance by adding a new Section five point two-one demolition delay to the next scheduled meeting of May first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Jane Ramsen, the second by Doug Cook. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
And member Yost?
Yes.
Okay. So this evening we have an update from our master planners under the comprehensive plan update, JM Goldson, to lead a review of the global or the goal prioritization survey in Gloucester Comprehensive Plan Draft content. And I believe Jenna is in the audience. There she is. Welcome.
Hi, thanks. Good to see everybody.
Yeah.
So I'll make this as brief as I can. I know you have things on your agenda, but it's nice to see, nice to see all of you, and thanks for having me come in. Appreciate that. I was kind of reminiscing as we were putting this presentation together. It was about a year ago, my husband and I decided to come up to Gloucester for our twenty-third wedding anniversary, and we were staying at the Boport Hotel, and, and I, I was thinking how, yeah, that really was true love, because I was actually there to run a public forum for you guys, and, and he, he put up with that. But we also had a lot of fun doing other things, including going to a lovely little artist, artist shop. I can't remember the artist's name who I bought earrings from, and, and we went to The Cut, which had just opened, and we went swing dancing. And then, when I was running the forum, the mother of one of the band members was there, and we were chatting up about her son running this swing band, and, and it just really hit home to me then, you know, Gloucester's just under thirty thousand people. It's a, you know, a small city, but still a city, and, and, but it's really very close knit, and people really do know each other, and it has a very special feeling. So I was reminiscing a little bit about that and looking back on all the work that you all have done together as a community, and I know that there's been a lot of people with passion and feeling of protectiveness over the things that they really love about Gloucester. But what I've also seen is that people want a balance. They're looking for extremes. And I think what you've come up with, with your goals and now your strategies and your core themes and your vision is all about balance. And I just wanted to recognize the planning board's leadership through all of that. I know we've taken you through this, you know, quite a journey together, and it's, it's almost finished. These were just a few photos. I was going back to find some photos of our engagement, and we had people taking photos of their meeting in a box times, and I loved seeing like the wine and the cheese and crackers. People just made it like a fun little thing, and, and, you know, this was working with the eighth graders, and you guys did really a fantastic job getting out and getting really diverse perspectives. And so tonight, I'll just go through a little bit of a reminder of what we've done, which, you know, we just like to document that each time we meet with you, and then talk about where we're going next steps. We'll talk about the goal prioritization survey, and, and then a little bit about the content and the layout, and give you kind of a glimpse of, of what that is shaping out to look like. So I also went back, and we don't have the final numbers yet, but you've engaged almost four thousand, not people, but collected almost four thousand participation points, which is, I think your goal, I wrote it down, I don't have it in front of me, I think it was something like twenty-nine hundred, a little bit more than twenty-nine hundred. So you've well exceeded that goal and really kind of blew that away. So that's impressive, and you'll see that we are in phase four. We're in that final phase, and, and it's been, you know, quite, quite a journey working with you. You can see back when, back when we started, and now we're looking at pulling that all together. You've really worked hard on what are those policies, what are the strategies, and now we're looking at, you know, more details like the implementation matrix, and who's doing what, when, and pulling the plan together into a nicely laid out document. So phase four is our final phase, and this is when we again discuss implementation specifics, who's doing what, when, and what resources can we provide you with ideas for funding and things like that, and then creating that highly visual, laid out comprehensive plan that will be easy to digest. And, and those final deliverables, you'll get basically two documents. One will be, it's an in-design document, but you'll get a PDF, and of course, we'll give you the original artwork, too, the comprehensive plan layout. And then the second thing, we call it the action plan, but it's actually a spreadsheet. And so you're going to get a spreadsheet that you can, that will be a living document that your implementation committee, which we do recommend, that the, the city look at creating, is updating that regularly. And that's why we provide it in a spreadsheet format. And so recent milestones, we worked with department managers who did a review. We have been working on the comprehensive plan design, the layout with our graphic designer, and we did the goal prioritization survey. And so that's what I'll, I'll focus on in a few minutes is what we learned from that. And then the next steps will be revising the, the draft plan, really pulling that layout all together, and then releasing it for public comment, really within the next couple of weeks. We want to get that out by the end of April. And then in May, we want to do a finalization, look at public comments that came in, work with you to identify any final revisions, and, and also work on finishing the implementation matrix. And then in June, we're looking to have you potentially vote to, to adopt the comprehensive plan. So let's look at the goal prioritization survey. So you had an astounding, astounding results for this as well, as you had every step along the way. Oftentimes, by the time we get to this level of detail, the community is a little bit like, just finish the plan. Like, we don't want to do another survey. But that's not what happened in Gloucester. So you got almost another eight hundred responses, which is astounding and exciting, and, and it told us a lot as well. And so, a community emphasized investing in education, improving communication and public participation, maintaining environmental quality and health and equity, health equity and healthy aging. And those were the four, four primary things that the community emphasized. I'm going to give you some of those nuances, because I want to tell you a little bit about what the department managers emphasized, and then we're going to bring it together and say, where were those overlaps? And so you'll see that with the community, we had them ranking overall top themes and then top, top goals in, in the different themes. And so, blue economy, investing in education, improving the community and public participation, public facility access, environmental quality, and that health equity and healthy aging. You'll see that there were not, was not overlap with the department managers on these, on these themes. The department managers emphasized, and a lot of this makes sense, given there, you've got to think about what is the perspective of, of a department manager versus a community member. So business retention, sustaining city operations, and having the staffing and the finances to support that, advancing heritage tourism opportunities, and public transportation were emphasized by department managers. And then you could see, these were not, these, the things that I just mentioned, were not specifically in the community ranking top three. But then, when we go through what was, what were the mutual things that, you know, we got good support from both department managers and community members? And so, housing stability and economic diversification, infrastructure investment, historic preservation, historic reuse, and walking and biking trails. Those were all supported in an overlapping way. And so these all got the majority by both community and city staff, upgrading public infrastructure, further development of the city's network of walking and biking, creating and supporting comprehensive transportation network, and increasing community participation. So these weren't always in the top goals of those, but they got the majority of those answering. Okay, so we just want to break it down in few different ways, and you got our more detailed analysis. I don't want to go into all the details, but just wanted to give you kind of the, the highlights. Oh, and this is just those, and kind of showing if it was in the overall, or if it was just supported by, you know, the majority, et cetera. All right. And then how will we use this information? So we thought it would be important in the executive summary to really use that as a way to, to highlight those overall, those top goals that were, that were supported as themes in the, in the plan. So we were, you know, basically going to write up some summary around those, those top overall goals. And then within the comprehensive plan itself, if you go to each core theme, we now know what the top priorities are in each core theme. So we were going to basically reorder the goals so that the top priorities were listed first. I know that maybe that seems like a nuance. Oftentimes, when we write a comprehensive plan, we say that the order is of no consequence. In this case, the order will be in, of some consequence. But the other thing, just to note, is that people read, even when you say that, people still read it as the first one is the most important. So it's just human nature. So now we have something to base that, which ones get top billing. And, and, yep, and so that was our general thought on that. And we're happy to talk through that more. But before we do that, let me just kind of wrap up. I just have a few more slides here, and then we can kind of open up for, for planning board questions, comments. You've seen this in the content, because you've already looked at the content, but just as a reminder, the contents of the plan has this, you know, introductory section. We talk about the process and overall how it was put together, existing conditions. We just do kind of a snapshot of the larger work that we had given you earlier on in the process. And then we focus on, you know, what were the engagement results? What did we learn? What did we do? And then we get into the vision, and each core theme is a chapter, and the core themes and strategies, each core theme has the goals and strategies within that chapter. And then we talk a little bit about implementation, just about recommendations for establishing some kind of implementation committee and, and some general guidance around that. We, we have had a meeting with, with staff and the mayor, just to start that discussion on, you know, what does implementation look like in Gloucester? And so we'll take, we'll take what we learned and sort of create that chapter from there, and then we just have a glossary of terms. And then, of course, we'll refer in the implementation chapter to the fact that there is a spreadsheet that lives as a separate document, that is this living implementation matrix with all the information that you could need to implement it, including case studies and potential funding sources and other links to resources, and what department is in charge, and what committees are associated with this, you know, each strategy. All right. So then the layout we're working on. We, now that we have the content, and you've all looked at the content and giving us, given us, you know, kind of the thumbs up, we like to wait until the content is pretty well set before we start to lay out. And, and so this is, we just showed you a couple sample pages. I'll just flip through. There's one more slide to just show you. We're trying to make it, you know, heavy with photos and, and break up the text and break things up with images, as well as there's infographics on other pages and sidebars or quotes that we pull out. And, and then this is a example of a little bit more content heavy, where we have a timeline that we pull out, and, and then we like to use little icons so people can kind of find their way through the plan, and those will be repeated through the plan. But this is just kind of the general look, and, and in the next few weeks, we'll have the plan completely laid out so that we can put it out for public comment and, and hear what the community has to say. So that is everything. I know I went through it very quickly, but I wanted to make sure to get to, you know, your questions and thoughts. And I also have the survey pulled up, if we want to go into the details of that goals prioritization survey, but I'm happy to just take the slide share down and, and talk through anything that you'd like to talk about. And, and Rick, I'll hand it back to you as chair. You're on mute.
You're muted, Rick.
I'm the one always saying that, but thank you, Jen, for that brief overview. I think we're all excited to see a, a final, a final draft. And, and I'm encouraged that we did have so much participation. Now, Jane and I tease each other during the early stages of this, and, you know, under promise, over deliver, and I'm happy we did that as well. And I just want to thank everybody for their digging into this process. It's been an important one. Frankly, I was been dreading it for about five years, and, and we survived. So congratulations. Certainly open it to any questions or comments. David?
Jen, just go over with me again how you're going to reconcile the community's feelings versus and priorities with the department heads, how that gets reconciled.
Yeah.
Because it seems that, that, that could set off some conflict, right?
Yeah, our thought, and, you know, you can certainly weigh in on this methodology, but our thought is to look at what was supported with over fifty percent by, you know, both the department managers thinking more like practically feasibility, capacity, that's kind of their lens with the community. And there was a lot of overlap, and so the slides I presented towards the end of that segment show where that overlap is. So we were focused the priorities on those, that overlapping area, the mutual, kind of the mutually agreement, mutual agree. And it's not that things are out of the plan. The other things are all still in there, where we're just going to focus on where there was that alignment in terms of pulling those out as priorities. Does that sound like a fair way to do it? I'm, I'm open to suggestion. I know the numbers are not the same, but it's just department managers have a very unique perspective. So we didn't want to, you know, minimize that point of view either by looking just at the numbers of people.
And I'll, I'll just add that when we're working through the implementation plan and engage with department heads, we thought it would be interesting to see what their priorities are, is, you know, they're going to really be involved in driving the implementation of a lot of these strategies. And, you know, where are the areas where community priorities and manager priorities align seem like areas where we could have the most success and where we could make progress on implementing things and prioritize those recommendations that fall under those goals first. So that was a little bit driven by us just trying to be practical and what's the community's vision, what do managers, you know, see momentum around so that we could really prioritize the implementation of those strategies first.
Well, okay, thanks.
Will this be taken back to the department heads? I mean, I can imagine that it's maybe, it's good to have feedback both ways. It might be hard to move the public needle, as it were, since the public is a large entity. But the, the department heads, of course, are, have inside views and are concerned about the things that they know most about. But I wonder if they could be influenced by the public views a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely, Steve. We're, we're sharing the analysis of the community goal prioritization survey with department heads, and we also will report back just to the community what we heard so that they can understand, like, this is what the community's vision was, and this is how your input is shaping the plan.
Also, it's, it's important to prioritize the public's point of view, simply because they're not experts when they read the document the way staff is anyway. You know what I mean? So like, staff will know if something is important and needs to get done, and the public just wants to see that it's, that what they like is prioritized. Yeah. Question, is, is there going to be public hearings with regard to this?
So you're not required to have public hearings per se, but you certainly can if you want to. When, when we've worked with communities, they typically just open up for public comment, you know, before the planning board makes a recommendation. So what, what we typically advise is that in the, your next meeting, I don't know the date, but it would be towards the end of this public comment period sometime in May, where, you know, you'll take more public comments at that meeting, as well as ask for things in writing, you know, before that. So that's what we do, but you don't have to advertise it as a public hearing.
So when you say take public comment, do you mean online, or do you mean during meeting?
Either way, I think that if it, I think you could do it either way.
The, the plan is to put out the plan that you've all reviewed the content for into a designed form and have it on the website, and put it out for public comment where people can just submit their feedback by email, and then we can adjust the plan based on that comment. Then it can be reviewed again in a planning board meeting, and then we're planning to present the plan and, and the planning process at a city council meeting in June. So those will be all the different ways that the public will be able to weigh in.
So meaning when we're discussing it, well, because we don't always ask for a public comment while, while we're having meetings, right? So are you saying that during one of those meetings, when we have a more or less final draft, and we're talking about moving it on to the city council, we'll ask the public if they have any comment during the meeting?
So.
And so will the city council?
It's up to you. And Alex, I think you were basically explaining that we're going to have it online and take online public comments. We'll have a form. People can submit written comments. Most of my clients do open planning board meeting up when you're reviewing the draft for additional, like, verbal comments. It's not a requirement. It's totally up to you. But most of the people, the clients we work with do do that. And then again, at the city council.
I guess, I think what might be, might be valuable is after that public comment period is closed, where we, we receive written submission, we kind of get a flavor for, for what those comments are, that summarized at the meeting when you're reviewing the kind of final draft, so that people can see what other people have already commented on the draft, and then, and then give the opportunity for, for folks to speak on it as well.
I do think we need to have an opportunity for people to speak at a meeting.
Yeah.
Do you, do you guys agree? Do you?
Yes.
My planning board colleagues agree? Yeah, good.
Any other questions at this point? Beverly?
Yeah, I don't have questions. I just want to say two things. First of all, this is really a distillation of tons and tons of work. And so both to read the three-page summary of the key themes, but to really look at the layout, it, it took time to assimilate all that information. But my sense is, this has been gone over and distilled, and the best of the best is, is there. The two things that I really want to compliment your team on is, first of all, I think the layout is very engaging, and that's very important because there's so much information. So to have consistent graphics and to have photographs and it is really important so that people don't get buried by the detail, but they find it more enticing to read. And the second is, I think the implementation plan is really good, and to have an implementing team. And then what happens is it falls upon the city and this team to say, do an annual report to say what got done, so that some people, that people feel that some progress is being made, and that the consultant's gone by then. But if, if, in fact, this is a distillation of what both citizens and city managers and city staff think are, are important priorities, it, it's important to show forward movement, and it's also important for transparency. So then the burden comes on, upon us to do this implementation. And I think that as implementation plans go, I think it's, it's well rendered.
And, yeah, thanks, Beverly. I'll just add that we discussed an implementation plan with the mayor, and, you know, it, it looks like what we'll do is, is have the mayor appoint members of an implementation committee that would represent the planning board and other boards and committees that are going to be working towards these goals. And then, just as you said, deliver an annual report with was, what's been accomplished each year. And we're still working with Jen's team on developing some metrics that will also help us see, you know, how much progress we're making, and I'll provide the framework for those annual reports, as we definitely, you know, want to take action on, on these items and, and make this an actual and accountable plan. Well, this perk two point zero. So that's a inside joke with Craig and I. But, so we had a plan implementation review committee back in the day from Plan Two Thousand, and that got out of hand. So, but thank you, Alex, for that.
Now you're dating yourself, guys.
That's okay. Ad hoc Plan Implementation Committee that reports directly to the planning board. Any other questions or comments? Very none. I just want to thank you again, Jen, for the work. We look forward to the next and final stage, and you can come up to Gloucester anytime. You don't have to come on anniversaries. We're not going to pay any more money, but you can, you can come up as a guest.
Well, next weekend, we're celebrating our twenty-fourth wedding anniversary. So marching along, but we're going to go to Savannah this time.
Okay.
We like coastal. I don't know.
Terrific.
All right.
Thanks very much. Okay, other business, discussion of FEMA required amendments to Section five point five floodplain overlay district ordinance.
Okay, so we have been receiving correspondence from FEMA for the better part of a year. They went through a public noticing prog, process for announcing a updated flood insurance rate study, as well as updates to our mapping. And I'm going to share my screen just to give you a sense of what has changed. And I can also, I'll, I'll probably post this on, on the website, because the, the address is too difficult to, to try to indicate to people, write this down if you want to go to this website. But they, they essentially, if I back out just a tad, I think it will a little bit more. Not all of our panels were changed. So this blue highlighted area are the panels that were modified. The others remain the same as they've been since two thousand and sixteen. And most of the changes are, are, I think it's a new elevation data set and a new modeling run that for mostly for inland areas. And if I zoom in further onto a panel, and if you can see on the far right, there is a And by zoom in further onto a panel, and if you can see on the far right, there is a legend that shows you that potentially areas in yellow are areas that have been modified to potentially increase the the flood area. Again, these are wiggles along the margins. And then there are purple areas that have been removed or or decreased. So it's not a lot of significant change. These have been available in draft form before the public public noticing for the better part of a year. But again, I think as as you scroll around, there are it's it's not really changes to the elevations along the coast. It's really kind of in some of these inland areas that are in some in some areas, they're just city on land, part of the watershed. Whether they flood or not is is not really too relevant. But there are a few areas where it has kind of moved a little bit. I haven't done any analysis. I mean, people have to take a look at the map and and see what it may do to an individual property. But again, I don't think the the changes have been quite that significant. So these are these are in effect as of July eighth. And we are required by FEMA to stay in the National Flood Insurance Program to make sure that our local ordinance is reflecting the most current data and current mapping. So I also provided a draft that was reviewed by the Division of Flood Plane Management at the state that basically we just have to make references to the flood insurance study as well as the FEMA firms, the flood insurance rate maps with a with an effective date of July eighth. And there we used the model, the state's model by law when we amended this in twenty twenty-three, if you remember that effort. And there are still a couple, a couple little tweaks they wanted. We use some abbreviations where they want FEMA spelled out and they want other things to be spelled out. So there are just a few minor changes through the ordinance. And there's also been one example in the application of of the standards that we have set. We'll also provide some clarity on how those standards are being interpreted by the building commissioner and the floodplain manager, which is our our conservation agent. So I can put that up as well to just briefly let people see what those changes look like. Screens. Can everyone see that? And I think I'll that to a hundred percent so we can see it better. Everybody see that? Okay. So you can see, you know, on the first page, there's just date references that are that are changed. This, this is a red line version. I could put the the version up that that was prior, which basically is taking out the insertion in aggregate. And then this this clause that's on the end. So we fell into a situation where we are talking about, we talked about floodplain area on a lot. We're talking about dry land. There are some instances where there's there's property, property lines that extend out into the ocean or into another water body. So for the way that we are typically, you know, devising things, our definition of a lot speaks to, you know, kind of dry land versus versus wetland. So this is just kind of clarifying what we're talking about. We're talking about the floodplain area on a lot. And then
Wait, Greg, can you pause? Can you? Can you go back to that? So but I don't, it says any land below elevation feet five relative to NAVD, whatever that is.
Yeah.
Is that saying land land in the water?
Yes. So basically, that's that's the coincidence with like higher high water. And so everything C word would not be included in the calculation. Because right now, there there could be some property lines that it is all floodplain. So the floodplain mapping, it basically assumes the entire surface of of that water body and then also extending into the land. So it's just making that clarity that we're only talking about that portion that's that's on the land portion of the lot.
So it shrinks the amount that people can put a building on?
It 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 that that ten percentage is related to that floodplain area.
Right.
There aren't, there aren't, there are many instances where it's it's more coincident with the water's edge, but there are some properties that extend beyond. And so they're not getting a benefit of being able to to alter more because they own water.
Right. And so this was added. Why FEMA? Why did FEMA want to?
This is not, this is not a FEMA requirement. This is where we're in the process of of required to make updates for FEMA. This is for the application and interpretation that the the building commissioner and the floodplain manager have been applying. So it's it's to clarify that language there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then lastly, they would like us to spell out Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation and the FEMA Emergency Management Agency Region One. And that's all the changes that are required. I think we talked about this at one point. We were hoping, and I I believe we were successful in the reference mapping, we said, we made a reference for for most current. FEMA does not allow us to do that. Everybody has dates and they require us to do this. So it's not certain when the next time they'll do a map amendment, could be five years from now, could be two years from now. We will revisit this type of process if we're if we're required to do so.
Well, what about then? So did we take out in reference to the May one twenty twenty-two map? Did we take out the or or the most current?
We left that in because there are there are things that there's there's part of the operation of the ordinance that the the requirements of of FEMA and the National Blood Insurance Program. And then there's what we've done above and beyond. And so that
Okay.
that that future floodplain area is something that we have chosen a reference to. And and again, if the state releases a new map, updates the Massachusetts Coastal Flood Risk Model with another iteration, we we will make that publicly available as to what we're referencing. But we don't have to amend the ordinance in that. Maybe it's maybe maybe at some point, we will, there'll be an even better data source and we might revisit it. But for now, we at least covered ourselves that we wouldn't have to revisit for that purpose.
Right. And the twenty twenty-two version is still the most recent?
Yes.
Jane, we might have to make that office permanent for you.
Right? I could use some money.
Where's Alex? He obviously left the meeting, so that's not going to happen. Hi, Alex.
I'd love to have Jane right by and make things easy.
Yeah.
Um, so next steps.
So we are under a little bit of a timeline. I mean, we, you know, it does make sense to kind of make this coincident with when these maps will go into effect. The administering of it will always use the most available data. But that data point is obviously going to change in July on July eighth. So we're looking to have the board, if you're in agreement, initiate this as a zoning amendment so that it can go to the city council at their meeting next Tuesday to be referred right back to you. And we can have a similar discussion, but in a public hearing, in a public hearing setting on the fifteenth of May.
Do you have a link to that map?
I do. I can make that available. I'll probably, we will try to think of the best place to put it on the website. But I can certainly share that.
And just to review, the map itself shows the differences between the previous map. That was the yellow.
Yeah, so it's a it's a little bit complicated, but as you zoom in, they've done this kind of color coding of of plus and minus. And then also, you know, the the actual FEMA flood layer current is also on there. So it's kind of like superimposed. And again, a lot of it is just, it's kind of like ribbons around the margins of some of these areas. And it doesn't affect all the panels. There's North Gloucester, Eastern Point area, you know, some of those areas, there was no change. For whatever reason, they they focused in on these on these inland areas throughout Essex County. And and it may be more significant in other areas where there's riverine systems, for instance, that they do a much more in-depth study of of how that catchment is going to work in those areas. And those areas, they may have increased laterally as well as as vertically, the the amount of floodwater they would anticipate.
Terrific.
Just a question for the future, I guess. I I I love the map geo site on and on the city's website, you know, with all the different layers. So I imagine this, there is a FEMA flood layer, just looked, and this will go, this will replace that at at some point in July.
Yeah, so the so the layers, the layers for the new product will will be basically, the old one will go away. We could, we could keep some legacy layers on so that somebody can do this kind of same thing where they can kind of toggle on on and off to see how things have changed. I don't think we would probably put what I represented or put up earlier. Pretty, that would be a lot of data layers, you know, and and we have a lot of resources already there. What we also always tell anybody and and anybody that's involved in a development project. FEMA's map center is the ultimate source for for determination where folks can print out what's called a format, which is they can identify their property and and show what that looks like. That is a representation of the floodplain, and then it always has to come down to an onsite survey to really identify on the ground where it is. But we can, we could probably keep that legacy version of of twenty sixteen and the current so that people can see if they've been impacted.
Thanks.
Terrific. So I think last thing on the agenda is some minutes.
Wait, hang on. I think we have to make a motion, right?
Yes.
To forward this on. Okay, let me get my motion.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Um. I move that in accordance with the Gloucester zoning ordinance, one point one, no, one point eleven point two A. The planning board initiate the amendment of section five point five floodplain overlay district to bring the ordinance into compliance with the requirements of the NFIP, which is the National Flood Insurance Program, and maintain the community's participation in the program and to clarify the application of standards for residential construction.
I'll second that.
And oh, hang on. I should mention that the ordinance is dated. That uh hmm. No, I shouldn't. It's fine.
Okay, so I'll second it.
The motion by Jane Remson, we have a second by Beverly Bookin. We need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan.
Yes.
Member Remson.
Yes.
Member Bookin.
Yes.
Member Cook, yes. Member Henry.
Yes.
Member Rosen.
Yes.
And member Yost.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just note that this is going to be coming back to us for what? A formal vote on the first, I mean, the fifteenth of May? Is that right?
Yes, that that will be the public hearing date.
Okay, well, I'm going to miss that hearing. So I hope that we we have a, we still have a form. I just wanted to mention it to you so you would know in advance. Thanks.
Put it right on my whiteboard.
Oh, right.
Eric, do you have any minutes? And Sice, thank you, Catherine. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I can't.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
So a motion to approve the minutes from April third, twenty twenty-five by Sean Henry and second by Steve Yost. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan.
Yes.
Member Remson.
Deb Stane.
Member Bookin.
Yes.
Member Cook.
Yes.
Member Henry.
Yes.
Member Rosen.
Yes.
And member Yost.
Yes.
Hi.
Good one. All right. Enjoy the afternoon.
Thank you.
Enjoy the weekend.
It's gonna be beautiful. It's gonna be seven eighty, maybe?
Seventy, I seventy, I seventies on Saturday.
Yeah.
In Gloucester.
Yeah.
We'll see how the wind, we'll see how that wind blows.
Yeah.
Keep it that way.
I'll believe it when I see it.
So I don't know if we're going to be doing a lot more remote meeting, but we do need a a motion to adjourn and then a roll call.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Motion by Sean Henry, second, Doug Cook. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan.
Yes.
Member Remson.
Yes.
Member Bookin.
Yes.
Member Cook.
Yes.
Member Henry.
Yes.
Member Rosen.
Yes.
And member Yost.
Yes.
Okay, have a good evening.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.